And we have Grant Jennings online. And the proposal tonight is, and this is just very briefly a recap. We, as you're aware, on Tuesday night, we worked through the rating review outcomes and the different rating models in terms of rate capping and also the differentials. We sort of reached a fairly set position in terms of the differentials, but there was still quite some discussion around the capping. And also, in particular, in relation to local and non-local businesses, small and large, et cetera. So we've done some additional modelling, or Grant has done some additional modelling, and forwarded that out to members. So we thought we would revisit that first to test and check in with each of you as to where you're sitting in terms of that particular question in preparation for the rate review report to be distributed tomorrow for consideration at Monday night's meeting. So we'll discuss that matter first, then followed by the second part of the budget workshop, which is a real focus on the operational budget, given we went through the capital budget, both renewal and new, on Tuesday night. So I'm going to ask Grant to share his screen and take over the commentary.
Thanks Cathy. Guys can hear me okay?
Yep, all good.
Excellent, just got a new headset, so just making sure it was working. All right, thanks everyone. So as Cathy has outlined, done some additional modelling based on the conversations from the other night. And they were sent out to everyone yesterday. So hopefully that's. Sorry, I've got two versions of the presentation open. Just share that again. Push the wrong button. Yeah, so I think the table version of the presentation is probably more easy to view and look at. We have tried to graph it similarly to how we graphed the original information, but there's a lot of models and so it makes it quite difficult to to view that in a graph. So is that showing on the screen?
No, we've still got the heading page, Grant.
Oh, here we go, don't worry, sorry. Those weird things when you're sharing sometimes. Here we go, so here's our table of the models. So what we've got there, I haven't, we've obviously done a lot more models than eight models, but the, I think this, these models we've picked sort of show the journey that we've been on. I think the decision around the differential for coastal and rural living and for primary production was sort of made, we only made it the other day, I guess. So we only gave that indication that that's where we wanted to go fully. But I still think that it, that that decision was probably the easier bit. And then the rest of the models from there sort of flow on to the rest of the decision on how we've got to where we are talking about the capping right now. So obviously that top model there is the consultation model that we went out with. And that was where, you know, we were giving 12% capping to all properties. There was a 100% differential for coastal, rural living and primary production. And what you can see there is that was that consultation model where it was basically having an 8.3% impact on all the residential properties that weren't getting capping because of how much capping there was, almost $2 million worth. This second model is the one, I guess, that, you know, we've decided to go, that we'll probably go with a differential of 70% for coastal and rural living and 10% for primary production. So that already, even without dropping the capping amount, the capping percentage, it actually has brought the cost of the cap down already, you know, 150,000 or more and almost a percentage point in terms of the impact on those other properties. And so then we get into the models that we've sort of worked our way through over the last few weeks. We had, you know, just what was brought the other day was a model around a 15% cap potentially for all properties. I think now we've sort of pushed that along then to maybe that being an 18% cap for all properties. So that's sort of model three and four. So that was, you know, if we were still giving a 18% cap for business as well. So that brings the impact down to 5.2% on those other residential properties not getting capping. And then we get into some of that other modelling around then potentially lifting the cap for businesses or not having a cap at all for businesses. And so there's four models sort of there, shown there. So model five is, you can see over on the right hand side here. So it's basically if we gave small business the 18% light residential and 30% for the non-local or the large, I think we've sort of already moved past that. Model six is the one, I guess, that I sort of put up the other, the night after we did some quick modelling on the spot, which is the one where it's 30% for those smaller businesses and 60% for non-local and large businesses. I don't think we need to sort of talk about why we've put that up as our recommended model. I think we went through that a bit the other day. But obviously then, you know, councillors may want to consider either model seven or eight. So model seven is if we gave that 30% to the local or small, local, small to medium businesses, but no capping to any that are considered larger or non-local. And then model eight is that, I guess, for businesses ripping the Band-Aid off and not giving any capping at all. And obviously each model brings that, that impact on the non-cap properties down because there's less capping given. So I guess these bottom three, the one here that we spoke about the other day, there's a 3.5% impact on non-cap properties, 2% with model seven and only a 1.7 with model eight. And I'll just quickly look at the graphs and then we can chat about it. As I said, this graph here, it's very hard to see what's, you know, going on because there's lots of data in the graph. But I guess at a high level, what it's sort of showing you is this orange line is, you know, what's happening to properties if we weren't capping at all. You know, so the property is down this end, you know, these are the properties that are experiencing a reduction in rates because of the change from the blue line for where they are now to where they would be, up to the properties way up this end that are seeing a big increase from where they are now. And then each of these lines represents one of the models. And each, the one all the way to the left here is our consultation model. And then each of those models moves, you know, slightly closer back towards this non-cap line, but still offering protection right at the top end here. So the last few models obviously have had the cap go up from where the 12% was for consultation. We looked at 15 briefly and then we've looked at 18. So this would be for residential properties, obviously. Some of these models have higher capping for commercial and industrial properties. But, you know, so we've still got this protection up here, this little section of, you know, but that it's a lot smaller than the section was when it was, you know, came all the way down to this orange, yellow line here. And so then the graph was simplified a little bit by just showing basically our consultation model and our recommended model. But obviously, yeah, the other graph had a lot more info than that. So yeah, happy to open that up for discussion. I'll go back to the table because as I said, I think that's the easiest to look at the data.
Thanks, Grant. Yes, I think the table is much easier to actually understand the data rather than the graph. Once you actually put all of the different models in the graph, it became overly complex to really understand and see the, see the impact. And so open it up to observations, comments from members following on from the discussion on Tuesday night. You know, we've, we, you know, have listened to the concerns of the members in terms of ensuring that the, the people at the, at the bottom end of the, of the, I guess, wealth and, and rating is least impacted and that those people who are most able to pay are the ones that are actually paying here. But we've looked to balance this model also from a fairness and equity point of view in terms of, you know, seeking to smooth things out across the rating base in Wayal and also recognising the model that we went out to consultation on. And we can't diverge significantly away from that model that we have consulted on. Otherwise, we should go out to consultation again if you're wanting to go in a particular model which is significantly divergent from what we went out to originally. So I'll pause there and open it up. Got councillor Inglis first.
I'll just make a couple of comments. I'm happy with model six. I think that pretty much sits pretty much in the middle of what we discussed. The only thing I'd like to see changed, I don't agree with branding local, small to business, small to medium business or non-local. I think it should be just SM business and large because if this ever got out in the public in the domain, people are going to say, well, because we're not a local business, we're getting discriminated against. I think you need to take those headings out of it, just call it small to medium business and then large businesses. The non-local stuff, you can imagine how that'd play if it ever got out. Especially when we're trying to attract people to town and businesses to start up and stay here because of the hydrogen stuff.
Yeah. The, the local versus non-local is a distinction that we make in procurement already. So it is actually defensible in that context, in that, you know, supporting local because, you know, it is, it is about the development of business in.
Certainly have had drama, but not when you're, not for this context. I don't think it should be, and certainly everybody understands why we do it.
Yeah.
I think if you're going to leave it like that, you just, you just open yourselves up.
And if I can say something, I think most of the businesses that have probably, when I've done the classification, I think most of them that were non-local anyway would probably be large because what it is, it's, you know, where you've got a large corporate entity that has multiple sites in a lot of places. So I don't think that if we took out non-local, it would actually change the answer very much at all. And, and so in my thinking, when, when we, if we decide to go down a path like model six, the, during the budget process, what we'll need to do is develop probably the, you know, the form that we're going to use to, to collect the data and sort of ascertain how we're going to make some of those distinctions. And I think that'll need to be workshopped a little bit over the next couple of months before we, you know, adopt it, our rates.
Yep, we would need to put a policy position in place. And take that feedback, thank you. That councillor border.
Just wanted to pick up on Mark's point there, but attracting people to town to do business component, I think that is an important one. And if I'm understanding what Grant has just said, correct me if I'm wrong, Grant, is that there's, if you do what Mark is suggesting, that there's a minimal tangible change on the actual numbers, in which case that sort of confirms my opinion more towards what councillor Ruth is saying. Because it also then creates, it just opens up, I think, a liability from a PR point of view. So if there was a massive gain in the actual tangibility of it, okay, maybe we weigh it up. But at the moment, I'm just thinking, oh, now just, just remove all risk from a PR point of view because it's not going to make a huge difference on the numbers. That was my first point. And the second point was going to be just that I'm quietly celebrating in my head because I think I actually finally understand the graphs, which is that the consulted version, which was the higher angled line that then capped off lower to the higher end properties. What we're saying with the recommendation is that that's, that's coming down to the left hand side of the graph, bear with me, which means that the, the people that have a, are getting a benefit in the shift are now under the new recommendation of getting a bigger benefit. But that obviously is compensated or is balanced by the fact that the people who are having a bigger increase are experiencing that slight bigger increase on the other end of the scale because it's being capped at a higher level. Is that correct?
That's, yeah, that's right. And what I can, what I can, so with the, so what you can imagine is if there was a line, a straight line going up through here, you could imagine a property that sat, you know, it sat around here. So, you know, under a, under the non-cat model, they would have, you know, seen a reduction down, you know, from this, this point here, this sort of blue, blue line in the middle down to here. And then under the model six, so model six is this sort of arc ready line here. So, you know, when we went out to consultation, they were actually, instead of having a reduction all the way down here of their rates, they were actually seeing an increase up to this grey line. Now, if we went with model six, they're actually, they're still seeing a reduction. They're not as big as in year one as they would have been there. So there's still a little bit of an impact, a temporary impact. They're still, but they're getting a reduction and then over time, you know, those, the, the capping will disappear and they'll come back down to here. There will be rate increases in the meantime, but their underlying rates will have decreased over that time.
Not, not to, not to take you completely off, Grant, but that, that's, that's where that residential properties cap number has come down from 3397 to 1957 because that person, that there's less properties affected, which is what you've mentioned before about the cumulative effect of capping, that the more you do, the more you do. And so what we, what we're doing is we're kind of raining it in from a few different fronts at the same time and tidying it up.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, and there's, well, there's two reasons. There's, that's right, there's less capping overall because we're providing less capping to commercial and industrial. We're setting the cap higher for them, where setting the cap for residential higher. So there are already a few less that are picked up because anyone that was getting between a 12 and 18% increase before is now not capped anymore, whereas they would have capped under the old model. And like you said, and there's that effect of like, the more capping you have, it sort of exponentially builds itself up because you have to raise more to cover the cap and so on. So sort of three effects happening there.
Yep, now I'm, I'm happy, thank you.
Councillor Knox.
My thoughts are that I kind of like model six, as we've discussed. I do have a little query though in regard to the capping for business. If we're going to make local and non-local 60%, I'm happy with that. If the intention is to bring them both down to 30%, then I'm not happy, I would not support it because then you are shifting the burden back onto residential rate payers with low value properties.
I think, I think the intention there was to maybe have just removed, and so basically have the, as a 30% cap for small to medium business. And so we just talk about the size of the business, maybe turnover, employees, that sort of thing. So that we would keep 30 for small to medium, 60% for large, but take away maybe some of that local, non-local conversation.
And I think that, as Grant mentioned earlier, that will have very minimal change to this model in terms of the impact on non-cat residential properties. So it's not removing, you know, the small to medium and large. We're still keeping that 30 and 60% in those two distinctions. Okay, if there's no other questions or, or commentary around that, it, am I right in, in thinking that that there is a degree of comfort around model six? And what we'll do, this is, as you all know, it's not a decision-making forum, but we will bring model six through in the report to council for consideration on Monday night. And of course, if you want to change the model, we will also represent all of these models in that report. So that you can, and residents can actually see what council has considered and you can change the decision on the night if you want. But what we'll do is we'll present model six as being the recommended position from an administration point of view. Okay, Grant, do you want to move into the second part of the budget workshop, talking about the operational budget?
Yep. Two seconds.
Can I just say thank you to Grant for all of his work on the development of those models? It's a huge piece of work and I think a piece of work that is of significant value to the community in terms of what's been achieved with a fair distribution of the rating burden across the whole of the community in places where people can afford it.
Yeah.
Right. So. Slide. All right, so just going back over what, quick, very quickly, what we spoke about the other night. We obviously spoke about the, the long-term financial plan model and the adjustments that were made to get ready for, so we've sort of got the, when the council agenda comes out shortly, that'll have the, the long-term financial plan updated with those, those adjustments, ready to go out for consultation on that. And then we started talking through the proposed capital budget for next year. And I think we were all, in the majority, fairly comfortable with what was included there, noting that it was fairly pared back in terms of no upgrade and really concentrating on renewal in line with suggestions from the audit committee and ASCOZA. So now it's time to get into the operating budget. So I've just put this slide up, obviously, we did, councillor's got this as a handout last week when we were talking very early about the, the budget at a high level. Obviously, as I said, this is a, I think, something that I think councillors, but also the community found useful last year when we developed it, you know, really outlines, you know, in a, hopefully, there's still a lot of information on the, on the graph, but sort of tries to pull together a lot of info in a way that sort of hopefully tells a story quite quickly. So I won't necessarily go into any of these right now. Obviously councillors were given that information last week. I might just, as we move through, got a slide towards the end where we sort of talk about what's missing. Is there anything like really, you know, obvious that needs to change other than, you know, with, with the discussion we've had last week? So I'll start moving through, stop me if you need to. So in terms of operating budget, so most of our, you saw the operating budgets that I handed out last week in sort of detailed, especially at that programme level, you know, outlining the things we do and how much money we've got available to do it. The, this slide here is just sort of talking about things other than that, that are suggested for inclusion in the budget. We do each year have an allocation of 200,000 that's available to cover like sort of one-off projects. Because there's always things that we have to do or, or really want to do. So just go through some of them now. So at the top here, there's three items that are suggested for inclusion in the draft budget that have been picked up as addressing risks really. And one of them is most of the value. So the aviation fuel tanks, so we do sell fuel for planes from the, from the airport. And that aviation fuel tank has not been cleaned for apparently 20 years, I believe, which is posing a bit of a risk. It's definitely past the timeline when you're supposed to be doing that work. The thinking being that we may, we're putting that money in, but we're also, there is a grant from the state government that comes out every year for, for airport projects. So we're going to, if, if that's approved, go in, look to get some of that funded. So we may not need to spend the full amount on the cleaning if we can get some 30% funding from the state government if they think it meets the requirements. Just a small one, another airport one, just some of our gable markers for our runways are, have sort of gone astray, you know, as happens over time. We just need to get a bit of a restock of those. It wasn't sufficient in the budget to fund that and also library security lighting. So apparently most of the security lighting outside the library is no longer working. So that's the estimated cost to get all that going. So there, those three are addressing risks. There was some other suggestions for budget inclusions, but they've all been sort of considered and not included at this time, other than, so the other two items that were sitting there and probably warrant some discussion around.
Do you want to pause it there?
Pause it, that one, yep.
Um, you know, in terms of those three items that we've included in the draft budget from an operational perspective, really to address risk, comments or thoughts from members? Councillor Knox.
I think I accept the, we've got to clean the aviation fuel tanks, it's vitally important. But what I would like to say is I would doubt whether we would make $75,000 even over a couple of years on the sale of fuel. So it's another loss-making part of our operations.
Yeah, it's, it's, I've got to pull some data together actually for our airport coordinate lead on that because part of the discussion that's been happening recently is, you know, is that something that we should be commercialising and letting someone else deal with? And, you know, are we actually making money on it? We sell it at a decent margin and we do sell a fair turnover of aviation fuel. I'm happy, and that has picked up over the last few years. But yeah, I think we need to pull a bit more data together on, on that. You know, in theory, that 75,000 is a cost that should have been spread over smaller cleans potentially over time, and it's got to a really bad point and hence the need for, for all the work, but agreed.
Yep, I mean, we've discovered that the fuel tanks haven't been cleaned, cleaned for way too many years and they now pose a hazard in terms of not actually getting them cleaned. And the length of time that it has been since they were last cleaned is creating that increased price for the cleaning of them. But certainly we have identified aviation fuel and, and the manner in which that is actually sold as a potential commercialisation opportunity for the airport. But we do need to fix the tanks because otherwise we've got a significant risk there with the amount of sludge that's in the bottom of them, which we actually don't know how much is there. Okay, Grant, do you want to move on to the next two?
Yeah, so I guess the other two items that were discussed by exec have been included at this time, but were raised for, for discussion were, so obviously a little while back, we adopted a, our system modernisation roadmap. And, you know, the audit committee have raised like whether that should be moving along. It's been a bit of a, probably a 12-month pause at this stage. So the issue with those sorts of things, they're not cheap. And we've got a quote to sort of even put together the tender docs, which in the case of going out for a corporate system are quite, is quite an in-depth process and also helping with the tender itself and, and then, you know, getting it to contract signing if we were going to change our corporate system. And that, you know, that's around 100,000 just to go through that process, noting that any change in corporate system is likely to be well in excess of that cost. So yeah, happy to have a discussion around that one. There's, I've got some thoughts, but there's different thoughts on, on where we should go with that one at this time and, and our affordability of making those changes, but also the risks that we face. And then that second item there, I guess, what you'll note, remember, I think, is that last, the last couple of years, we've had a line item in our budget. We had like an extra 100,000 available, which has helped with sort of dealing with weeds during the big growth seasons. Now, that budget was only in there for two years and so it actually isn't included in, in next year. I think Colin's there and I did speak to Colin and he said that he's been working with his team on sort of some efficiencies in how they can get more of that done within their existing resources. But, so just noting that that, that extra 100,000 isn't in there, but that we probably have a few, based on some of the discussions we had last week with, with councillors around priorities and things that probably needed addressing, you know, there's a few, we've, we've caught it sort of city amenity, which fits in nicely with what we spoke about in terms of our two-speed strategic plan. Yeah, there's a few items there that, that sort of, whether they get a set extra budget allocation or whether there's an amount available to sort of handle some of the things that are coming up in those areas. Around mowing is one of them, but, you know, things around risks with trees. And as we know, illegal littering is costing us money at the moment, whether there's some actions that can be taken in terms of bringing that down. So, you know, the thoughts were, do we need some, an amount in there that, that allows us to deal with some of those city amenity issues and some of the challenges we have there? So happy to open that up for discussion.
Thanks, Grant, and I wouldn't mind making a couple of additional early comments. First of all, in terms of the systems modernisation body of work, we, during sort of the early part of 2023 and the latter part of 2022, we did and have developed a comprehensive roadmap for systems modernisation. Our systems here in the organisation have been running on the current platforms for, since the year dot. They are still working. It's not as if we are at a position of risk where everything is going to break. But the, it, what the systems do is pose some limitations in terms of productivity and contemporary natures of business processes that we could implement within the organisation. So, you know, there is some downsides of the current systems, but they're not at the. Uh but they're not at the point of breakage in terms of um in a position that therefore we would um at be disrupted in our business from a systems breakdown. That's one point. Second point in terms of systems modernization is that um we, uh local government in South Australia, there are a number of larger councils that are currently going out and looking at systems modernization. And uh personally, both Grant and I believe that we shouldn't be at the forefront of uh looking at new systems and that um we're better off not being an early adopter in these type sort of things and and watching and and seeing where local government and bigger councils are taking the development of systems for their, for the application in local government. And thirdly, the point is our primary system. Um uh whilst at the moment it is going through, or our primary platform is going through by the service provider, a major overhaul. Um and at the moment, if we put out to tender, our current system would not, um current provider or platform um probably wouldn't be competitive. However, uh if they um um, you know, have another twelve months where they start settling down, uh there could be some uh more competitive nature and therefore an easier transition and a less costly transition for us. So there is, there are good reasons to hold off for a period of time on systems modernization, but it is not something that we should lose sight of. It must always stay on our list of new initiatives, because I do wish to say that our systems are not contemporary. And they do uh cause and create uh some productivity challenges for us. Uh but they're not broken at the moment, and perhaps we've got higher order priorities this year, but they should not be left off the list in terms of new initiatives and they should, there should be some, uh certainly some um uh money put towards and budget put towards our systems in the near future. Maybe it's not in the immediate future. Um in terms of city amenity, um.
Just Kathy, before you go, is there any synergies with us going with other councils for system modernization?
Um absolutely. There is certainly um uh some early discussions across the Air Peninsula in terms of uh joining together with going out to market in terms of systems provision. Um I think there is a potential shared service opportunity, certainly across the Air Peninsula councils in that regard. Early, early stages, it will take time to bring that together. We have shared our systems modernization roadmap with the Air Peninsula councils and so um I think that um that that is definitely a piece of work that could be done. That wouldn't cost us money to actually explore that over the immediate future uh in terms of of that body of work.
Is there a role for the R D A to play in this? As a.
Um not the R D A, the E P L G A.
E P L G A.
Is the coordinating uh body for this and and we have started the discussions with the E P L G A, certainly. Um.
So Kathy, just on the system modernization still. Um so what's your best guess at the longevity of our systems? Like, when will, when do you think we've reached a critical point that we need to invest?
Um, that is a really hard question to answer. Um we have done a risk assessment in the context of the current systems and and there is some uh works that are needed in terms of the holding together of the network and the towers that we have on Homicue. And there is a tower and a connection point on the top of the civic building. So we've got some works that will need to be done when that building is demolished to ensure that the network is maintained. We have actually put budget in for next year budget for those works. So I believe we're not at immediate risk to actually put a timeframe on it. I'm not going to say ten years. Um but, you know, certainly, certainly we have got a period of time. I'm not concerned.
So systems modernization is 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 hardware and software. It's a combination of both?
It will be, yes. This is primarily software and operating system and platform at the mo- at this moment in time. But once we actually get the preferred solution in terms of the delivery of the of the platform and operating system, then an assessment will need to be made in terms of whether or not hardware needs to change in order for that platform and operating system to run. Mayor Stone?
Thank you, Kathy. You grabbed my attention when I saw mowing. Very basic comment, whether it's from there or elsewhere. We must find more money and allocate it to mowing. We are back to the old days, the bad days. We're out of control. We are not looking after that aspect. We've been told enough. And I'm glad I'm not the only one that's raised this before. It is what the community expects. If we ignore and do not get on top of our open spaces and our poor quality as far as the mowing, I suggest administrators won't be out of a job next election, but we stand the chance of being out of a job. But I know we are looking and I, and you can guess from my tone, I am strong on this. We are not doing sufficiently. I've defended on media for a long time. Oh, look, be patient. I'm not prepared to do that anymore. It is pure B S to suggest, oh, we've had unseasonal rains. We always have unseasonal rains. We've got to ensure that there are, there is sufficient in the budget to stay on top. Okay, in the long term, it's like litter. There is a community issue. But we've got to get on top of that. Otherwise, it will come back to bite us on the bum at the next election. Because there are so many community members out there that have dispute. We get nothing out of council and we've got all these weeds. We're back to the bad days. We've got to ensure that however it goes in the budget, there is more money to ensure that we keep on top of that. We've just got to, it's going to be one of those hard decisions. We're going to have to find it somewhere. So whether it's out of that, pay your money, pay your money, or elsewhere, it's got to be in there.
And thank you, Mayor Stone. And before I move to uh councillor Knox, um the the inclusion or the suggestion for consideration of city amenity there and and the provision of an additional hundred thousand dollars is to to start looking at exactly those sorts of issues. I do want to also remind members of the service review that we are currently doing in uh open space. And it is um uh anticipated that the outcomes of that service review will be reported to the next Audit and Risk Committee. That service review process has done a very deep dive down into the um that service review has done a very deep dive down into uh the programs that we run, including mowing and weed spraying and tree pruning and tree removals and the whole of the open space maintenance program. So the programs, the resources that are uh going towards it, uh what the expectations are in relation to a city of this nature and uh and expectations in terms of maintenance. And we'll come back with recommendations in terms of service levels and resources that are needed in order to maintain those service levels. So um that is going to really provide us with a really good framework in terms of understanding where might we have too many resources being applied? Where might they actually be redirected for uh other different service levels? But we do believe that there is some additional funds that's required in this area, particularly in the areas of mowing um trees, tree removals, tree prunings, those sorts of things, um and illegal littering. Probably my one last comment on this is, is there is a um a a another program of work that needs to be developed along these lines, and that is, is the community pride and the communities um uh take up of the, you know, um maintaining their own verges. How is, how is the city looking? And that's going to be a combination of work that starts happening uh in in the next couple of months. Um is that um council will recall in the strategic, knowing the annual business plan last year, it was adopted that we do explore a and have a mini project around um uh treating a couple of verges, uplifting the uh nature of a couple of the verges in a particular um community or or suburb of Wayala and to work and engage the residents with actually maintaining those verges. And how does council support that to start actually increasing community pride and increasing the community maintaining verges as well, so that it's not just all one, you know, council's responsibility in that regard. So there's multiple avenues to go towards that, but absolutely, you know, I mean, um for for council's consideration is addition, is adding um extra budget for city amenity, including mowing. Um councillor Knox?
Totally agree with what Mayor Stone said about getting the place looking clean and tidy. It's what we, what I hear most of, that we're not maintaining the verges enough, not mowing them often enough, et cetera, et cetera. I get it all the time. Maybe I'm mixed with the wrong people, I don't know, but they whinge about those things. In terms of system modernization, I was just doing a, a little think process. Now, what we would have put the essentially the current computer system in in at ninety two. When I was CEO, I'd come from a small council, but it'd gone down the path of putting in a computer and it came here. And we didn't even have an automatic typewriter that could correct. So it was a world of difference. But we need to look at it, but we don't need to be early adapters either. Because I've gone through that process in Korn, and it's a bloody night where I'll work twelve hours a day for a long time to try and sort that system out, which is essentially what you've got now. So I would say, yes, system modernization is needed, but not at the moment. Let 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 it work its way through the processes. Let the legal council look at it, work at what's best, et cetera, then we can follow their lead.
Deputy Mayor Pond?
Yeah, I'm pretty similar. The system modification uh modern, modernization um definitely is something that we can probably put off for a little while. Not a priority, like you said, we can probably get away with it for a bit, but still keep it in our minds. And I'd like to absolutely back what Mayor Stone said about the mowing. You've definitely got support of most of the elected members. It is an area that we are happy to back and definitely try and find more money for if possible. Um and yeah, like councillor Knox said, that's the thing that we get the most complaints about, all of us. And on your idea for for people taking up their own front, it'll probably work in some areas of the town. It's never going to work in others. Um Hope Collective have a system where residents can borrow garden mowers, whipper snippers, whatnot, just to try and keep their leases intact. Um to go that extra mile. I can't see that happening for quite a few. They'll just throw it back at us and what do we pay our rates for? Um but yeah, absolutely, that is an area that we need to focus on.
Councillor Border?
Uh essentially, that's uh to the two points I was going to suggest. Um but just further to what Tammy, uh councillor Pond, um Deputy Mayor Pond has just said is, and I know that you're in on this, Kathy, is collaborating with the Hope Collective in whatever way, shape or form to increase that uh that neighboring city pride, just to tie all those things together. So it's, and I take absolutely on board with the experience that Deputy Mayor Pond has got in in the Hope Collective with certain parts of the community, just just no matter what you do, they're going to complain. But just to continue to work collaboratively as best possible. And in regards to the um the system modernization, does it work better that we found our forever home as a council before doing that? Or would it be better to try as best we can with a lot of moving parts and a few unknowns, of course, to do those two things together, where you, we find a new home and then simultaneously update? Or the two would be better separate, or it doesn't really matter? Just a thought.
Um it probably matters in the context of hardware uh in terms of where we're actually located, but not in terms of platform and so on, which is actually the first stage of the process. So um uh yes, it matters, but but not in the first instance in terms of systems oneization. Um I I think it it might also just be really useful. I'm going to hand over to Colin to give a little bit of a a description in terms of what has um over the past twelve months, eighteen months, how the additional funds that were put into the budget for um verge maintenance and and spraying and so on um was utilized. And then without those monies, um um, you know, what what can and can't be done in that space. And then um, yeah, over to you, Colin.
Yes, it's, it's very hard for me. So when I first got here, the hundred grand was already in in play. Um and it wasn't until August when we did have that rain bomb that I pulled the trigger on the second hundred grand. Um and from that, that 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 assisted with labour hire, I ended up um looking at three individuals to come in through through Labour High, through Zancock. Um I placed one on the tree crew and I placed the other two out in the field to help with the mowing. Um because tree crew is still a fairly weak area for us, and it was costing us in excess of five, up to ten thousand dollars, depending on what sort of tree you want to remove in this town. So that, just understand that one tree is on average about five grand to remove, you know, some of the bigger trees, up to ten grand. Um and then we try to, you know, spend that between different contractors, so we look, you know, look like we're transparent. Um I ended up spending about ninety four grand. It took me, I had it for about, it got us through, sorry, five months on and off with different Zancock employees. Um and we pushed it right out through the Christmas period to help us. And that, not just for that, but I had to, you know, divert some of those individuals to help with watering, to make sure the trees didn't die over Christmas and all those sort of things. So we're very, I was very strategic about how I placed those individuals, where the the risk and impacts were. Um yes, I take to the mayor's point that, you know, we have um crazy weather. We had a lot of crazy rain. Um and I've even got to the point now where I've changing the type of chemicals we're loo- we're using based on the expertise that I have in the field, spending a little bit more money because it kills the seeds, not just um the plants themselves. And 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 as you know, that seems to be the biggest issue. And we're trying to focus on, you know, how do we, how do we use different platforms to mow, different types of cutting devices? Um, you know, everyone has their own opinion on which one they should use out of the experts that I have that work for me. Um but it's just trying to find that balance in those areas. And and like you said, um Debbie, it's hard in some areas when it, when it comes to that. But five months was the best, like I said, started in September, it's not recruited around twenty sixth of September, and we finished uh at the end of February. Um and that was, that was all, that's all we could do. Um but, you know, honestly, tangibly, I would say maybe we got a forty percent um improvement because believe it or not, you know, during that period of five months, I'm losing people and leave, long service leave, we've got too much leave. So, you know, I was filling gaps in, you know, what you would say F T E. So, you know, the hundred grand not, it doesn't increase my my workforce a tenfold at all. Three individuals don't do that. But what it does do is if I do have someone that needs to take five months long service leave or what have you, they're able to do that. So it's really more of a gap fill and a Band-Aid solution right now. And that's my, you know, my blunt um frank opinion. So that's why you may not see huge impact from the hundred thousand dollars. But we're trying to spend it the best we can um across the board with the, based on the uh the capability and based on our capacity, uh to be honest.
That's a good question, Colin. How many mine crews do you have running at one tour?
So we have northeast, south and west, from memory. I've got to try and get my head around it. Um so, oh, sorry, three crews and there's two people per crew, so to speak. And they're all one tree crew. Um and we're working very hard. And you know how it is to deal with individuals and personalities and trying to get that um concurrent activity every time they go out. So that if they are working in the street, they're not just, we're focusing on one job, because, you know, everyone hates to see five council employees sitting around a truck. You know, it always seems that when someone drives past and criticizes, that's what's happening. But they're usually, because there's a, there's a reason for them to be, they're doing what they're doing as as a larger group. Um I know that's hard to justify, but sometimes that happens. But yeah, I'm working. It's it's been, it's been a hard, hard slog to try to get this team um pulled together, that's for sure.
So am I hearing that um council is amenable to including an additional hundred thousand dollars in the operating budget for city amenity purposes? Um what I would suggest that we do in um that allocation and that once that allocation is in there, that we come back to council after we've received the service review report in terms of the open space services. And we workshop with council in terms of how a program in terms of uplifting city amenity can occur and how those monies can be utilized once we've actually also received the open space report. Okay, Grant, moving on.
Sorry, muted myself. Um so, all right. So then um the next couple of slides are sort of looking through the feedback we got from last um last week, uh. The feedback we got from last um last week, uh workshop, when we had the very initial discussion. And just look at how those things may be incorporated or some of the um challenges with those. So um. Uh mowings, mowing of verges is considered as part of that sort of city amenity. These are the items that were flagged potentially that councils thought might need an increase. Um hard waste and free dump day is potentially also part of that city amenity. How do we? You know, that is that part of the solution for getting illegal littering, uh illegal dumping down or um is there some other some other way to to work on that? Um waste education was brought up, so we did have a project allocation for the current year. That was that K S A project um around um. People, you know, signing on to 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 make sure they're doing the right thing and also um helping people out with the the green bin caddies for their for their kitchens. Um there isn't an ongoing project allocation for that, but there is obviously an ongoing internal resource um uh for for those sorts of things. Um and then the other item flagged for increased potential was whether we need a grants officer. Um. There is there is no allocation at this stage either. It was in our larger um. Organisational structure um from a couple of years ago, but it's one of our sort of unfunded positions at this time, based on um priorities need. Um and 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 noting that it is actually quite a hard skill set to to fill. Um in terms of having a specialist uh grants officer, what ten, w- w- as we said. Um some of those bigger grants at the moment sit with people like Jade, but other grants will go to the the subject expert. Um because often they're gonna have to be involved in the in the grant thing, any uh the grant application anyway, even if you have a. A dedicated grants officer, because they've got the knowledge on certain items. So it's one of those things, it's really hard to find someone who could do the whole thing themselves. Um and because we did go out a little while, got back to find a grants officer. So. Yeah, just one of those challenging areas and and currently no allocation in the the long term financial plan for that. Um so if you wanna discuss any of those items, that's fine, or I'll keep moving.
Yep, keep moving.
Yep. Um so then.
apologies, Grant, councillor Knox.
I'm just a bit concerned about the hard waste and providing that to residents. I. We wanna have a really careful look at how much that's going to cost. It's gonna be a lot of money. Um I have no idea how much that would be. I I don't know what the tonnage fee for hard waste or anything is. But I think if we're gonna consider, and I would like to consider something, I'm not quite sure what.
Yep.
I'd like to know what sort of costings are.
Yep, absolutely councillor Knox. And and that's what I mean by, you know, if we if we put in an additional budget of a hundred thousand dollars. Into the budget for city amenity. And we will come back to council with a workshop in terms of how that might get um divvied up. Whether it's a, you know, a portion goes towards um hard waste collection and and how that does. And we'll come back with all of the costings and and. Cost benefit analysis across the whole of the programme. Councillor Border.
Before you get off.
Sorry, deputy uh Mayor Stone.
Just going back to the free dump day, I think we've touched on it in our discussions, reasons why we don't have a free dump day. Fifty percent off, a voucher goes out with their first rate notice. And there's very clear terms and conditions, what you can take. You can't take your biggest trailer that you can find. But perhaps consider that. Free dump day, as we've already identified, totally chaotic, can't can't be coped with. Full cost on us, but at least a fifty percent voucher concept, help with the rate notices. They've got, it's only valid for that financial year, so they can't store them up. And there's terms and conditions. Possibly one way to consider the costings of that sort of sort of idea.
Councillor Border.
Just wanted to reiterate what Mayor Stone has said and and previously what councillor Angus and deputy mayor Pond have said before about the free dump day. Just how it is massaged into an effective way to alleviate what we're trying to do with that item. Um but just making sure it's the shoe that fits.
Uh yeah, I mean, this is this is feedback from council members in terms of let's explore it. But I think it's about exploring what is the solution to the problem that we're trying to solve. You know, the problem that we're trying to solve is around illegal dumping and and dumping of uh rubbish and furniture and mattresses and so on. On curbs um and verges. And so what is the strategy that we can deploy across the city? That actually starts uh addressing those sorts of things. It'll be a combination of of. Strategies to increase people dealing with their waste appropriately. Um to the other end of the spectrum of expiation and regulation. So, you know, we need to, we need to look at a programme which covers uh both ends of the spectrum uh in terms of how we do that. Uh we also need to have a look at um the the services that are provided by um Wesley United. And also Bedford's in terms of the pickup of hard rubbish, et cetera. So we'll bring all of that back to council to work through with you.
I was just gonna say, it was reported to me yesterday that legal dumping has gone to a higher new level. There was a mattress floating in the water off the new beach. So that just shows that our terrible people are.
Deputy Mayor Pond.
I just wanted to ask, is this on top of the hundred thousand increase? Like we're looking for extra money, because I don't know if a hundred thousand is gonna cut it.
Uh this is not on top of the hundred thousand, this is the hundred thousand and um. A hundred thousand. Grant, do you wanna comment in terms of what the available amount is possible?
Yep, so it the hundred thousand is basically what we've got available in our budget. Unless we cut, we find something, you know, significant or or bigger to cut. That's the only amount we have available really um at this stage. Um without then starting to. Impact our um long term financial plan projections and noting that. Next year is a hard one. It is the year we've got the biggest deficit in there, you know, the year after we might have a little bit more wiggle room um with things. I think this year is very. Very tight and um yeah, yeah, I I think it's hard. To see, unless unless we can find other things, as I said, to to pull out of the budget. Um and and yeah, and as I said, there's a slide, you know, a couple of slides where we could talk about if anything else the councils might have thought of or. I'm happy to dig into that conversation. But yeah, there really is only a hundred thousand available in the current allocations in our current projections.
Thank you for that. And this is, yeah, if we do get that extra money along the way, I think this is one area we've got to think about putting it into.
Think that future investment decisions in this area in terms of city amenity also need to be informed by the service review. Uh body of work that is done. And so, you know, to make decisions outside of the that information actually coming through. Um you know, it would be remiss of of us to say um. It, you know, to spend five hundred thousand dollars on city amenity now when we're still actually working through the service review programme. And I think that I think that's an important informing piece for the council it to your decision making. So. Um you know, at the minute, a hundred thousand dollars is what could be achieved in the current environment and in the current budget. And as I said, this open space service review, I'm hoping the report will be available for the next audit and risk committee meeting, which is being held on the eighth of April. So it's not that far away. Councillor Border.
Does that open service, open space service review incorporate? I mean, there's a there's a bigger picture going on here about illegal dumping, the cost of waste rubbish removal. The me- the things mentioned, waste education, and obviously the free dump day comes into it as well. The alternate bin days, like we talked about that a while ago, is that part of a strategy that's gonna help things go in the right bin? Which then, does that have a shrinking import in um impact on the the massive amount of. Uh annual cost for waste removal?
Hmm.
And does that, does that then free up money for this?
The service review doesn't cover waste uh that's currently being undertaken at this moment in time. In the future programme of service reviews, there may well be a service review around uh around waste. But certainly the um education programme and the take a pledge. Uh in the context of ensuring the right things go in the right bins. The reduction in waste uh levy through the diversion of. Uh green organics and and recyclables from landfill is significant. And so. The more that our education programme is successful in diverting waste from landfill. The better off council is because the costs go down.
Yeah, and that that's I guess where I'm getting to with the with the alternate bin days as well. Just, I don't know how that end picture looks. But on that point of of the education or at least the marketing, I just wanna pick up a couple of points that um that Jade has mentioned and also councillor Campbell on the the chat here. Um Jade's mentioned looking after your own verge and receiving a free dump voucher. And uh councillor Campbell has said, uh doing some media stuff around hard rubbish because not many people are aware of it. So I think just trying to encapsulate that into into a a simple message of, you know, do something and get a reward. Here is what is already available to you per year, please use it. Because if if we're getting free dump days but no one's using them, it's not really achieving what we're trying to achieve.
I was just gonna make a comment on the waste education. You're wasting your time going to adults, you'd better target the schools. That is where you're gonna get the best. Going and talking to adults, you may as well just go and set the money on fire. You're gonna get zero response from that. We found all the waste education programmes we've done throughout the state. The middle to higher primary and junior high school is where you get the best value for money because. It's about their conscience. The kids going to high school, they start challenging their parents and challenge their behaviours. Don't try and go and educate. The general public because you're just wasting your money.
Um that is absolutely where the K S A education programme has focused, is at the schools. Um and you know, at that, at that early stages, learning uh perspective. So that it actually becomes part of the, you know, the children's um, you know, normal day to day behaviours. Uh they also go home and and encourage the parents and set these things up. So that is absolutely where the K S A waste education. Uh programme has been focused. Um one of the things that we've been talking about within administration is having um. Um it's not formed up yet or anything. It's a, it's the germ of the thought is is having blitzers across the city. And so um you know, blitzers on on illegal dumping, for example, and saying, actually, people. We're going to be able to, we're going to be out expiating illegal dumping over the next two weeks. You better go tidy up your verges and make sure there's nothing on there. So, you know, sort of um have some form of of blitzing across the city uh and get that out there from a a communication. And um uh media perspective. So, you know, we'll we'll start to work on doing some of those sorts of things and and bring a programme.
That's actually a really good point, because a lot of my guys are driving around all the time, saying that people complain about the verges all the like and I and. My perspective, I think that's a new point. It's the people that just chucking their old furniture, all the shit they got in the yard out on the footpath. And hoping that the waste fairies that I've got, they're saying gonna come along and make it disappear overnight. Because it gets recycled. Kathy thinks that's a great idea. He goes, that was a piece of shit put in the footpath. Better stone comes along, thinks, oh, I wouldn't mind that. And he goes, that's no good. And you you watch some of the stuff and it goes like a herd again. And you know, and I've noticed more and more, and it's not only certain parts of town, like the whole town, people using their footpaths. They don't worry about driving out the bush to legal dumping, dumping at the front of the houses. And it is crap, none of the rubbish that's thrown out.
And we've absolutely noticed the increase um in the city over the last six months. The regulatory services team. They've also now started to um have very close communications and contact with housing SA. And we're seeing some, we've seen some improvement over the last month uh in terms of housing SA properties. And um housing SA dealing with their tenants in that respect. So um you know, there's a a multi-pronged approach. I'll go to councillor border then, I know that Colin's got something to say.
The blitzers are amazing. I think that's a fantastic idea. It's a real opportunity to raise awareness. And for things like what councillor Angus has just said, um and aside that I'm on notice from my wife that I'm not allowed to pick up anything on the sidewalk for that exact reason, it comes and we end up with needing to get rid of it. However, I would like to say that it stops with us and then we end up, we can check our side um around our side, that's where it all ends up. But just in in regards to car seats, the R A A at Myland in Adelaide, they take five bucks and they take car seats. And we would know, because we've had to dispose of five or six of them just recently, um five bucks a seat and they get recycled. Because it's a big item that you just think, fuck it. And I see a lot of those, I don't know if anyone else does, on the side of the road as well. And some some of them might be half reasonable, um but some of them are are really just turf worthy. It's five bucks at Myland, but you know that they're being recycled. So I just thought I'd put that there, how we can dovetail it in. I've got a van, I could take five or six of them. Um but yeah, blitzers are a great idea, I think.
Colin.
Yeah, just just from my perspective, so um Kathy's team hates me because I find a lot of rubbish. Um. But in my street, there was a lazy boy out there. I just checked, made sure Bedford's weren't picking it up. I put some yellow tape around it that said, you're being monitored, and it was gone within twenty four hours. Um I just made a nuisance of myself. But, you know, not everyone does that and not everyone can do that. So that was a win for me. But that's what I sort of do. If I see it, I check to make sure it's not for a hard riff bigger, because I'm not sure. How well people know about it. But, you know, that's the only thing that I've been able to do is literally put the yellow tape round.
Aren't you supposed to, sorry, aren't you supposed, the person putting out on their thing, aren't you supposed to label it so that you're not guessing whether it is? Don't Bedford say, look, you've booked your dates on the twenty fifth of March, put and put this note on there so that they don't get in trouble by you. I I thought that was a requirement of the.
What we do is when we do see, when our regulatory services staff are out and about and they see things on the footpath. They will check with uh Bedford's or with United Wesley as to whether or not it's actually been registered for a pickup. If it's been registered for a pickup, fine. If it's not been registered for a pickup, they will first of all put a letter in the letterbox um of the house. If uh it's then not gone within a period of time, they will expiate. Um uh if it's in front of a house, if it's illegal dumping. They haven't done this as yet, but what I've requested is that we start to use crime tape around uh illegal, illegally dumped. Um pieces of furniture or whatever it is. And um you know, on that crime tape, say this matter is actually being investigated. And to start raising the profile that the council is doing something on this so that we can hopefully avert the next person from doing it.
Deputy Mayor Pond, just to answer councillor border's um question, when you ring Bedford, because I've used it recently. Um they give, it's a two week wait, but they say to you, do not put it out on your verge until the day before. And you get a text message to remind you. So everyone is very well aware and the communication is very clear. That we're not asked, do not put it out, do not put it out till the night before. Um so if it's been out there for quite a while, chances are Bedford did not know about it.
Grant.
Mm hmm.
I was gonna say that. I waited for two weeks. Once I knew it was two weeks, then I put the crime tape round it, it was good to go.
Over to you, Grant.
Yep. Um all right. So then the next items were um start with ones that council members flagged for potentially for decreasing service levels. So um there was like talk about open space and particularly like number of playgrounds. So that's obviously, um we're doing our open space service review at the moment. Um and also like playgrounds might, some of that might take a little bit of time and a couple of years as we as we renew some and and round some out of the the system. Um there was a talk about potentially the library opening hours. Um just ran the numbers. So we currently open. Library four hours each day of the weekend and there's two staff on. So the even, if we were to shut the library every weekend. Or um and not open at all, the maximum saving there is about fifty five thousand dollars. Um per annum in terms of um staff wages, probably some small amount in terms of electricity and stuff like that, but really staff is the main cost at the library. Um so that's just um throwing a number out there for people to see that it's it's not the hugest number. Um and obviously a a service that might be well, uh you know, is probably well utilised. Um building rationalisation, um it was was one. There is um a report to come back to council on where we're at with. Um the ones that have already been um resolved, but also um that, you know, some the next, over the next few months, the next few. Uh buildings and the ones on the list that we need to get to. Um and noting that we already have built into our plan. That we need to find another hundred thousand dollars of savings from building rationalisation over the next few years. Uh next two years. So we originally had a a goal in there of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from building rationalisation. We got quite a bit of that from the sale of the old um wet uh building. Um. And so that took out sort of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that, two fifty. So there's a hundred thousand already built, uh still built in there. Um and then in the next section, there were a few items that were, you know, flagged for probably not decreases such, but change in delivery style. And obviously, that's childcare and airport, which you already know about. They are subject to service reviews at the moment and. Any changes there are probably likely to be long term items and I'm not gonna be able to pull the trigger in the next budget cycle. But definitely, you know, still on the list for items for consideration and 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 future thinking.
Any comments, questions, thoughts? Um I think the, in terms of the. Um, I think the, in terms of the building rationalisation, uh, with the council agenda that goes out tonight to you all. And as one of the annexes to the strategic plan report, um, there's four annexes to that report, one is the draft strategic plan, the draft asset management strategy, the draft long term financial plan. And we have, because it is a key recommendation of the SCOSA in terms of building rationalisation, et cetera. But we have included a very high level communication plan out to the community in terms of building rationalisation. Um, as a starting point, it's very draft, um, and but it's a high level communication plan. But because it is one of the items that we need to get cracking on. Um, in terms of the library opening hours, as Grant has said, um, you know, it's a minimal saving. Um, and it's minimal hours over the, over the weekend on, on each of the days. And so to reduce any of those hours is going to impact on the, the great service that the library provides in the context of social inclusion opportunities and also, um, where there are extreme weather events, uh, et cetera. As a, as a haven space, so, um, but that of course is up to council. Councillor Boarder.
Just on the high level communication piece to the community, that sounds like a great idea. What I really enjoyed about the, uh, response to the SCOSA, um, report that came out was the ability to reference back to times when the council had let the community know, here's what we're dealing with, we're operating in a deficit. So that it's, it's just kind of like on, on public record that there's been a real effort made, so look, here's the direction that we're going in. So that inevitably when it comes time for an account, an accounting, um, from the community's point of view, we, we can point back and link back. Here was the article, didn't you get it? Subscribe to the email base. So I just wanted to encourage that the more we can do like that, I think we're kind of pre, pre-planning a, um, anticipatory positive response to the inevitable people that aren't paying attention through the year, that just wanna complain at one time of the year. We can go back, hang on, four, five, six times, we're telling you what we were going, what we were doing to this. So I just think that's a great idea.
It's the start of the process, absolutely. Councillor Knox.
I'd be very reluctant to see the library closed on weekends, it's only fifty five thousand. Unless it can be demonstrated that the volume of use is very minimal on weekends, which I doubt.
Moving on, Grant.
Yep. Um, so just before we get into any further discussion, just something that we thought was worth raising. So we have got, um, a demolition allocation within the budget already for next year of two hundred and thirty thousand. Which is actually a combination of the twenty three, twenty four and twenty four, twenty five allocations. We did some re-timing during one of the budget reviews, um, some other, with the, some of the work that needed to happen now. Um, the study for, for Cuttlefish Coast and, and some other things. So we've basically got a hundred and fifteen thousand a year, next year's got two years worth. Um, and then there'll be a hundred and fifteen thousand ongoing, so that was added into the long term financial plan a few years back. Noting that the, the money in next year is, is flagged for Forner Park and Point Lowly Marina Dock. Um, that, there's no allocation for the civic building at this stage. That's sort of its own item, as we know, with the prospectus and, and other items floating around that one. And we'll need to be working out how we fund that, depending on the outcome of that. Um, but without the, you know, without further budget, the programme will move slowly through some of the ones that are sort of already council have passed resolutions on, um, about a couple of years ago now. I bet around like Apple Yard Reserve Toilet, which is on the list to be action soon, but there was, uh, there's a small hidden toilet on Wyman Street. Um, there's talk about the City Park Depot, but that's got some, um, complications around it in terms of IT equipment and, and other items. And also the scout hall, um, the old civic building. So just, just wanted to flag that, that, you know, there's probably, we've got a, and there's other ones on there that council haven't resolved that probably could be on that list as well. Um, you know, we do have a lot of old buildings that we know we wanna start moving our way through, just noting that, you know, these first two will probably take up most of that. Two thirty, um, so yeah, just wanted to flag that with council that, you know, we've got money in the budget for it. But it's gonna take, um, a number of years and, and things will come up. So at this point, Lowly Marina Dock probably wasn't on the initial list that we spoke, you know, the plan a couple of years ago. When we first put that money into the budget, but, you know, it's come up as a bit of a, a risk item. So that means other things sort of push out into a later year. Um, I was happy to chat anything about that, but also, I guess, before we move along, it's, you know, have council. Was there anything else that came out from looking through the documents from last week, from this conversation? Um, any other thoughts on budgets, operating budget?
Deputy Mayor Pond. Just wondering if anyone's had a conversation, um, with the scouts regarding the scout hall. Uh, they've recently been advertising to raise money to get, um, themselves fire compliant. Including fire doors and a whole heap of other equipment, so they are frantically raising money at the moment. Um, it's been in the Wyla news and a few other places, so just wondering if they're aware.
I'm wondering if either Irene or Gail are aware, um, if the scout hall have had any um, recent discussions with administration. And has this, has the scout hall had any recent discussions with administration in terms of their, uh, their property? Okay.
So my understanding is that this is, I didn't think, this is called the scout, it's an old scout hall, but I thought it was only used by, for storage, by the way, our players. Currently, I didn't think it was actually used as a scout hall, whether there's another scout hall in town. This is the one down on Jamison.
No, it's not. Yep, yep, yeah. We'll change, we'll change the name and the, and the description of this one. Good call, thank you. Councillor Boarder.
Just, just on that old scout hall, so we are talking about the one that is uptown, that's the one we're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Um, it was a while ago, it was a while ago now, I think it was when we first elected. And they were talking, the, uh, the players wanted to have some security over that because they wanted to do some upgrades to that hall. Has anything progressed in their discussions with them, with securing them a lease or passing responsibility over to them at a nominal cost? Getting it off our books?
It's certainly on the list of discussions that we're needing to have with a community group in terms of the lease. We won't, you know, our intent is to look to demolish that building. Um, and then the discussions will need to be held with them as to where they relocate, what they're storing in that, um, in that building. Uh, we haven't yet, I don't think, uh, commenced those discussions, is that correct, Irene? I'm up to the, um, bit louder so everyone can hear.
We have had various conversations with Wyla players specifically around using or accessing the homestead building to utilize the toilet block there, because they're very happy to use their, um, site close to the homestead, but there isn't actually, um, a toilet facility there. One of our old lease arrangements said that we would provide access to a toilet at that location. And so we're just working through some security code issues to make sure that the group have access to the homestead.
Thank you. Councillor Knox, oh, sorry, councillor Boarder.
Just coming back to the other point about the long term communication pieces, no allocation for civic building at this stage. I think one of the topics on the community's mind will be that they don't want it to, to become decrepit. So I'm, I'm just thinking again, another opportunity perhaps to just say, look, here's the constraints that we're working in. It's not falling into the too hard or the, um, we've forgotten basket, it's kind of in the we can't afford a basket right now. Um, but just keeping that dialogue happening so that the, the community are aware. Again, even if it's just something that we can refer back to and say, we were fully transparent, we were giving the information out as it was happening.
Yep, certainly the prospectus for the civic building and, uh, request for tenure or request for quote for early contractor involvement in the demolition of that building, uh, will be issued this month.
Councillor Knox.
I've got two things, the first one is a civic building, West Hatford have left a big hole in the wall where the ATM was. Is there any obligation on them to fix that?
Um, we have signed a release from them in terms of the, um, uh, their previous tenancy in terms of that building. So in short, no, there's not, I will just get Grant to confirm that, uh, that position.
Yeah, so we've got some security, some, uh, security for them for when we need to, when demolition happens, if it needs to happen. Um, the cost of actually removing the old, like the actual large safe inside and stuff, um, because there's actually a cost to council. But are there any, anything else because it was for, the building was flagged for demolition? Um, there was no, yeah, no requirement for them to make good, other than anything that was gonna cost council money when demolition occurs.
Okay, the, the second thing is the old scout hall in McBride Terrace. Um, it is quite an historic site, um, because the first Wyla Hotel was on that site. That was where the sea scouts used to meet, and I don't know the history of the other buildings on the site. But it might pay for someone like maybe Paul Mazerick to have a, have a look at and see what history there is around that site. And I'm not saying don't demolish, but I'm just saying, if we're gonna demolish, let's give some recognition perhaps to what was on the site and the role that it played in the early history of Wyla. The pub got knocked down in about, um, ninety nine as part of the transfer of some properties from B H P or A R M, whichever it was then, uh, to council.
Thank you.
Grant, back to you.
All right, um, so that's sort of moving off the operating budget itself right now and into probably some other discussion around, um, rates and rate increases. Um, but first wanted to, just to flag again, obviously council saw this table, um, uh, at one of our presentations last week, you know, just keeping in mind that, um, there's still, you know, the potential for, for rate revenue to increase in the near future. Um, if some of the, as some of these items that we've, as, you know, some of them discussed tonight, um, start to move ahead. Um, so just wanna put that table back in front, I probably don't need to discuss it in too much detail. But, you know, there's, there's some big items there and some of them are flagged for late two thousand and twenty four potentially. Um, to, to start lifting councils' rate revenue, which isn't built into the plan at the moment. So, rate increase, so obviously our CPI are currently projected at four point two percent for March two thousand and twenty fourth, Adelaide CPI. It was four point eight percent for December, that four point two percent came from the R B A, I think, you know, um, they're, they're yeah, anyone's guess is as good as anyone else's, but, you know, the R B A are obviously aiming towards a target with their current policies. Um, so, yeah, that, that's what we've based all of our budget around, we always use March CPI. Um, the, so that obviously meant with our previous L T F P, um, required a rate increase of five point eight percent because it had that one point six percent above CPI built in. With the adjustments made to the L T F P, down to a point eight percent required for this year above CPI. That brings the required rate increase currently at five percent. Um, I don't yet have the valuation data for twenty four, twenty five, I'm just chasing up when it should be available in the next few weeks. So I wasn't able to, I can't give you some, any detailed modelling, um, at this stage. But noting that, um, is the way we've written the rate policy even that will come to council on Monday. Um, so in theory, what council are doing are, is adopting their rate policy for twenty four, twenty five. We, we normally do that alongside the budget, but with the rating review, it made sense to adopt it beforehand, um, to finalise that process. So, but even in there where we talk about the differentials that we're adopting, um, there is some wording around flexibility with the differentials so that we can shift them, you know, a little bit either way. If one property group suddenly gets a huge, you know, valuation increase and another one gets nothing. Because with valuations, I mean, it's the fact that your valuations, say your valuations go up by five percent, if it's fairly uniform, it doesn't actually do anything really to your weight modelling. Just because, you know, it's just about the allocation between different people. Um, it's when you get big differences, if one end of town suddenly gets a huge change and the other end doesn't, that can be a bit annoying because you can't really do much to adjust for that, but especially if like all your commercials suddenly get, uh, you know, if residential was to go up by thirty percent and commercial and industrial was to go up by ten percent, um, you might need to start playing, you know, adjusting those differentials slightly just to, to smooth that out, and we've always had that ability and I've still written that into the, the rating policy that you'll, uh, that you'll see on Monday. Um, but yeah, so not able to do the modelling, but it can still give you some rough figures, um, in a minute. So the waste levy currently, the proposal is to move it from four hundred to four fifteen. So that's a, basically a four percent, um, increase, uh, just around there. So, um, that's, you know, in line with CPI, um, as we would expect the costs for that to go up. Um, so residential rates would be, so if we were gonna do a five percent increase, residential rates would be expected to increase by seventy six dollars for the average property. Um, from that change, obviously there's some of those little impacts from the, um, from the rates review and the move to capital value as well. But as I said the other day, overall, residential properties I think are paying within one percent of their, um, of what they were paying last year from the change to capital value. And then, so that five might be somewhere between five and six on average. Um, but obviously, different properties are affected differently, you've got ones who've got capping and ones who don't, so there's some slight changes. But, um, yeah, so there's probably about a one percent further impact on top of that, and then you've got the fifteen dollar waste levy. So just wanted to put all of that out there. What I did wanna say as well, I haven't, as I said, I haven't been able to do the modelling yet, but, um, we did consult on a fixed charge of eight hundred dollars. Um, and remembering that our consultation was about what we would have, if we had have gone to capital value this year for twenty three, twenty four. So in theory, if we consult on eight hundred dollar, um, fixed charge there, when we do the modelling for next year, the model, the fixed charge should increase actually to eight forty if you put it up by five percent. Um, in line with the general rate increase. However, it's proposed that we probably leave ourselves a bit of flexibility to set the fixed charge somewhere between eight hundred and eight forty based on how that modelling comes out. And the reason I say that is residential properties are actually, um, more affected by the fixed charge because it makes up, um, a higher percentage of their rates, if that makes sense. Because if you think about a large industrial or commercial property, they say the fixed charge has to be the same across all property types. Um, and that their, their rates are actually more picked up by the rate in the dollar and the differential that we apply to them. So it, it's hard to know exactly where we should land the fixed charge. Um, so I'm just proposing that we have a bit of flexibility and bring that back to council later, once we're able to do the modelling. Um, just to make sure that we can land the residential properties still land, sort of the average for them falling in the zone we want. Um, so, um, yeah, happy to discuss any of that.
And, uh, Grant, I'm also conscious that councillor Knox needs, needs to leave shortly.
Okay.
What's your thoughts? Councillor Boarder.
Is the seventy six dollars including the forty dollar potential change to the fixed charge? And also the waste levy up from four hundred to four fifteen?
So, no, the seventy six doesn't include the waste levy, but it does include anything in the fixed charge. So it's the, but what I'm just saying, the, the reason I might need to adjust the fixed charge is so that we land residential in exactly where we want it. But yes, any, we will always talk about this change as a change in the general rates, which includes the fixed charge and the rate in the dollar. But it doesn't include the fifteen, sorry.
Yeah, so it would be like a, an eight, is it a ninety one dollar, ninety one dollar increase divided by fifty two? So a dollar seventy five a week. Yep, thank you.
No, I just think, I think it's pretty good, I'm happy with, you know, Grant's done a power of work and, you know, this hasn't been easy. And, and I think you should be congratulated. And just as a sign, before I forget, if you want a little bit of light reading, go to the Portland and Rat and Raven, have a look at the flag on Rex Airlines are getting for gouging the residents' Portland and the Paul Curves, it's amazing.
All right, uh, Grant, next slide, is there much more?
Nope.
Look at that, next bit.
The, the next bit is, I guess, is there mu, is there more to talk about? Is, do we need to, so we've got some time, timeframes, as Cathy mentioned, the audit committee are meant to be reviewing the draft plan of the budget on eighth of April. I have to actually put a document together that, for them to look at, um, and then we normally, you know, goes to the council's April meeting. And then we consult from April to May, happy to have a. Happy to have another workshop to talk through other things or changes, but you know, have we, are we? You know, I know there's lots, we've talked through lots, there's still lots of stuff that could, would be nice to have in there, would be nice to pull out. Um, is it, but is, do we need another workshop at all to discuss more? It would have to be soon, probably next week sometime, to meet timeframes. But um, yeah, happy to discuss that, but yeah, they're, they're the next steps in terms of where we're heading with the budget.
I think, I mean, just from what I'm reading um, from members present and uh, between the workshop earlier in the week and, and tonight. That you're reasonably comfortable with the preparation of the budget on the basis of the matters that we've discussed. Um, and presented, um, and so we will prepare the draft, uh, the draft budget on that basis. Uh, for submission and review by the Audit and Risk Committee on the eighth of April. Following which it will come through to council on the fifteenth of April for adoption for consultation. So, um, just recapping that, that, you know, it will be based on a five percent rate increase. Um, uh, inclusion from an operational point of view will be a hundred thousand dollars for city amenity. Um, together with the matters in relation to risk. And also um, from a, a new, or all of the renewal will be funded. From a new upgrade, we will be including the funds in for the foreshore master plan or the foreshore development. Um, as per council's previous resolution. So we'll prepare the um, draft annual business plan and budget for twenty four, twenty five on that basis. Um, and that will come to you on the fifteenth of April. Exclusive of feedback from the Audit and Risk Committee's consideration of the documents on the eighth of April.
Is that a fair and reasonable summary? Councillor Boarder?
So four point two percent CPI, point eight percent goes to here, here and here. Is that what you just mentioned can be communicated to the community? That, that we're going to be able to say CPI is four point two percent, for example, whatever it ends up being. And that we have added a point eight, I'm just looking at the communication piece.
Yep.
The point eight is going to go from this, this, this.
To these portions, correct? That's exactly how we presented.
Brilliant.
Yes.
I, I like that.
Mayor Stone?
I'm going to throw a spanner in the works, sorry. I'm not wrapped now when I see the dates in a full day workshop, the day before. A council meeting where we've got an agenda to read that weekend.
Sounds like a plan, I'll look for a different date. All right, no spanner in the works, that's okay, I'll find another date. Or the workshop, that is.
While we're at it.
I don't think we're handling just. I, I'll, I'll find different dates for the workshop. You're quite right, Mayor Stone. Councillor Boarder?
While we're at it on dates and just a really small point, but the RDA have got a free workshop coming up for small business in Wyla on a Monday. And if it was, it's not a council meeting, but there may be another count, an urgent one that we need to do on a Monday. But in planning those sorts of events with the RDA, if they can know when our council meetings are, so they can not book. Because this isn't the first time they've done this, there have been other events that they've booked on a Monday and I haven't been able to go. And so just again, small point, but if the RDA can be aware that we meet on a Monday night, often on a weekly basis. Um, just thought I'd put that out there.
I'll provide to them a schedule of our meetings. Um, unless anybody's got anything else that they want to raise. Um, I'll call this briefing closed at seven thirty. Thank you very much for all of your contribution and particularly thank you to Grant for all of his work in terms of the preparation. Of both the rating review and also the uh, draft budget considerations. So um, yeah, consider meeting closed, thank you very much.